Delay of the welcome everyone to Commissioner's Court. We appreciate you being with us. I do not see Dr. Romans was going to lead us in the invocation this morning, so I will, if you would, please rise and Commissioner McCann, following the pledges play circuit. Our most gracious heavenly Father Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings that you bestowed upon this county and its people, Lord. Lord, we are truly blessed to live here and to be a part of your plan. And Father, we ask that you guide this court, you protect our law enforcement, and you bless those in need. Father, we will give you all the praise. Give this court the discernment that it needs. In Christ Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one in indivisible.
All right. Well, the time is 9:05. We do have a quorum, so we will call this meeting Commissioner's Court to order. Are there any citizens' comments?
Yes, ma'am.
There are no court announcements to make at this time, so we will move to item one, which is consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioner's Court on July the 15th, 2025. Are there any additions, deletions to the minutes?
Hearing none, Judge, I move we approve the Commissioner's Court regular session July 15th, 2025 as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and seconded by Commissioner Spivey to approve the minutes as presented. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Oppose, abstain, passes 302. Item number two is consider and take action on participation agreement in the reinvestment zone number one with the city of Athens. Mr. Strong.
Good morning, Court. Welcome back. We are to discuss item two today, which is the participation agreement for what I would refer to as a TIRZ, T-I-R-Z, a tax reinvestment zone. The agreement I'm talking about today is the city of Athens TIRZ. Can you hear me? No, we're out.
Tax aren't working, so speaking, please speak.
Zone number one, the city of Athens. This is something that the city of Athens set up last year, late 2024, after they conducted the research and setting up this TIRZ, where they've also invited all the taxing units within the TIRZ to participate, which would include Henderson County and the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the TIRZ. A tax reinvestment zone is found under Chapter 311 of the Tax Code. It allows for taxing units to establish an area that would otherwise maybe not be developed in, and allows for tax funds to be set up between the taxing units to encourage or aid development in those areas. So far, the city of Athens has joined their own TIRZ. Trinity Valley has joined the TIRZ, and today, if so approved, the county would be joining this TIRZ for the area that's been designated by the city of Athens. We've previously had discussion about this particular TIRZ with this court, and there were some questions asked by the court that you all wanted to have addressed, namely the length of the term, the exclusions of the term or of the agreement, the participation obligation amount of the agreement. And then there were some administrative concerns as well. And so I'd like to address each of those with you and kind of answer the questions that you had previously asked. So the length of this agreement for the county's participation is set at 15 years, which would expire at the end of 2039, the beginning of 2040. The agreement obligation for the county would be 35% of the increment minus base. And so it's 35% would be the county's obligation. The exclusions included a single-family residential is excluded from this agreement, so no funds will go to that. And then specifically, there was an express provision to exclude UT Health Athens on West Loop and South 19, that property down there, because of a prior existing abatement agreement. And so that pre-exist this TIRZ development. And so they are excluded from this agreement. And then there was also a question about tax refunds. As you know, this court sometimes has to do mandatory and sometimes discretionary tax refunds. When that happens, there would be a future offset so that the county wouldn't be losing money on that. And then as far as administrative concerns, these kind of agreements were written by attorneys, and then they're signed and set off, and then the administrative aspect of it is that goes to other individuals that then have to interpret the legal terms that don't always match up with the finance terms. And so with great assistance from the appraisal district, Henderson County Appraisal District, our auditor's office here at the county, the county taxing unit, and of course, the city of Athens, we've been able to dissect and go through these terms and make sure that everyone's on the same page and understands what these legal terms mean as far as the finance world is concerned, and make sure that those are cohesive concepts and terms and that everybody's on the same page, and that has happened. And so I'd really like to thank all of those people that were involved. It took a lot of people getting together and making sure that everyone understood what was going on. And with us today, I do have two special guests, the mayor of Athens, Mayor Smith, and the city manager, Ms. Borstad. They're both here. They've really worked hard on this, and so if you have any questions for me or for them, they are here, and they can maybe discuss maybe some of the goals of the project.
Court questions for Mr. Strong before we invite our guests up?
Thank you for working on those questions we had concern with before.
I think it was important to do that now before the agreement, so.
Well, we did learn from the one other TIRZ.
Yes.
And the experience that we had of whatnot to do really came forward during this project of the discussion and did slow us down, and it brought some things to light, some discrepancies in the law that we really needed to get nailed down to better understand. So you were comparing apples to apples and oranges to oranges. Mr. Mayor, would you?
And while they're coming up, one last thing. If you do approve the agreement, there'd be a second task for the court following this at a future agenda would be to appoint a board member if this is approved. So there'd be an open seat that would be open until May of 2026 for this court to appoint.
Mayor?
Thank you.
Judge, Commissioner's Court, really appreciate y'all allowing us to be on the agenda to consider this. I do view this as a way for the city of Athens, Henderson County, and Trinity Valley Community College to invest in themselves. I think this will prove to pay dividends manyfold over the years, and I think it will kind of level the playing field for all of us to compete with other entities for economic development in the future. So I really want to say thank you to you for considering this. I want to say thank you to Mr. Strong for all the work and all the Henderson County Appraisal District did on this. And I do want to thank Ms. Borstad as well. She has done a lot of work on this. So if I can answer any questions for you, or Ms. Borstad can answer any questions, we'd be happy to do so. Court?
We don't have it in the backup or whatever, but I know we've probably talked about it. Where's the location?
There is a map that has been drawn. It can be up to 50% of the appraised value of the city of Athens, and I know part of it is in the extraterritorial jurisdiction. We can provide that map for you, but it's mainly the underdeveloped areas of Athens that we've kind of focused that map on.
Along with that, is there a list of your priorities also?
There is a list of priorities, a list of investments.
I know we've seen that, but I'm sure.
Yes, sir. And it also includes the airport out there. We wanted to make sure the airport was in there, so any development out there, we could capture that as well. I thought I had a historical map that we had, excuse me, that we had used in our last deliberations on this. But if I remember correctly, North Athens coming around to the east side, down toward the airport is how I remember it. It's not the entire area, but it is those areas that would be keen for development is my understanding. Ms. Borstad?
You're absolutely right. So it's primarily the from north all the way around the east around the loop to the south of the airport.
All right. Mr. Mayor? Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Judge.
And then, of course, yes, Ms. Borstad, with all the work that she's put into this in working with Mr. Strong. Well, Court, is there any further discussion concerning this participation agreement we wish to have? Well, if not, we'll entertain a motion with the judge's authorization to sign.
So moved to approve with the judge's authorization to sign. I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and seconded by Commissioner McCann to approve the participation agreement with the city of Athens in the reinvestment zone number one as presented with the county judge's authorization to sign. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. And if you will please bear with me, I was looking for a map and now lost my stuff. Now lost my agenda.
I heard a question.
I'm sorry?
I'd just like to express our gratitude. We really appreciate partnering with Henderson County on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number three is on the agenda is consider and take action. Sheriff's Office requests to sell listed seized weapons to Athens Pawn Shop. Sheriff?
Good morning, Court. We've done this in the past, and these are weapons that have been awarded to the sheriff's office. We have no need for them. We've reached out to three pawn shops locally here in Henderson County, and we got one response back, basically saying that they would agree to pay $3,000 for these weapons, and it'll get them out of our armory, off of our evidence list, and they're in good condition. So we're just asking the court for permission to sell these weapons to Athens Pawn Shop so they can resell them.
Court, questions? We've sold before, and we've traded before. We've done several different things over the years.
Yes, sir, and we really didn't have anything at this time that we really needed to trade for. That's usually what we try to do at first, but I could use this money to put back into the seizure account for stuff that we've spent already.
Court, questions, comments? If not, entertain a motion.
So moved to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and seconded by Commissioner McCann to approve the request from the sheriff's office to sell listed seized weapons to Athens Pawn Shop as presented. Any further comments? All those in favor? Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Court.
Thank you, Sheriff. Item number four is consider and take action to apply for Masterpiece Officer License funding related to HB 4264. Sheriff and Audit Office has requested that we pass over this due to, it may be law, but there's no funding in the budget for it. So if there's no objection, we'll move on to the next item. Item five, consider and take action to appoint Brandon Delaney to the Emergency Service District Number 12 Board of Directors for a term ending December 31, 2026. Commissioner?
Yes, this is ESD Board of Directors, ESD Number 12. Had a member that was appointed to the city council, and he had to get off of the ESD Board, Mark Hammack, and Mr. Delaney expressed a desire to serve the fire department and the community by being on the board, and he's a longtime channel resident. He's also been on the city council, and so he knows budgets, and he's ready to serve the community and be on the CSD Board. His term will end December 31st, 2026.
Court, questions for the Commissioner? Entertain a motion.
I make the motion to appoint Brandon Delaney on the board of ESD Number 12 with a term ending December 31st, 2026.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCann and seconded by Commissioner Richardson to appoint Brandon Delaney to the Emergency Service District Number 12 Board of Directors for a term ending December 31, 2026 as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously. Item six is receive financial reports, of which we have none today. Item seven is consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheets, of which we do have.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have a few bi-weeklies and a monthly report for April.
Okay. Court, questions concerning the payroll distributions 14 and 15? If not, can we have a motion for both?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the payroll disbursement totals biweekly 14 and 15 as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and seconded by Commissioner Tully to approve the payroll distributions for biweekly 14 and 15 as presented. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Accounts cash sheet? April 2025.
Okay. Court, questions concerning the accounts cash sheet ending in April of 2025? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
So moved to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Spivey and seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the accounts cash sheets for the period ending of April 2025 as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Item eight, consider and take action on submitted contracts. We have none today. Item nine is consider and take action on request for right-of-way permits. No right-of-way permits. Item 10 is consider and take action on submitted budgets. Ms. Monk?
I have those today.
Court, questions concerning the presented budget amendments? This is the time of year. We're a little bit earlier than we normally are. We're having to do more shuffling this year than in previous years. But you have that sometimes. Court, comments or questions? Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and seconded by Commissioner Spivey to approve the 2025 budget amendments as presented. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Item 11 is consider and take action on payment of bills. Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, for fiscal year 2025, in the amount of $571,277.
Commissioner Spivey, questions?
I have no questions, Judge.
Okay. Commissioner Tully?
I have none.
Commissioner McCann?
I have no question.
Commissioner Richardson?
What question? There was a bill on there. We pay both quarters to the dogs, yeah, to the city of Athens at the same time?
They sent us a invoice, so we're now in the fourth quarter.
Fourth quarter now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And one of the questions, you did catch the one on there for the precinct four that it goes into sanitation?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
If there are no further questions, we'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the fiscal year 2025 bills in the amount of $571,277 and 28 cents as presented.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and seconded by Commissioner Spivey to approve the bills in the amount of $571,277 and 28 cents as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you, ma'am. Item 12, consider and take action on submitted plans.
One, two, and four.
Okay. Commissioner Spivey, we'll start with you.
Yes, Court. This replat is one that was drafted a few weeks ago that we denied, and they have went back and fixed it. It's going to be two lots now instead of the three. I did have a question on the backup. It seems to have the old checklist. It seems to have the old checklist on there. Are they not required to do a new checklist for your office when they bring it back?
We do summaries, and if they match, and the corrections have been made, we don't necessarily require any.
Okay. And I was wondering when they deny, and then do they have to repay their fees?
That's, yeah, that's on.
Everything else looks good. If anybody has any questions?
Court, questions concerning the plat? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the final plat and the Sparks Edition taking lot seven and making lot seven R and seven R1 located in precinct one for filing purposes only.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and seconded by Commissioner Tully to approve the replat for the Sparks Edition, creating lots seven R and seven R1 for filing purposes only. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Court.
Q. Commissioner Tully?
Yes, Court. The first one is Leisure Land Project. It is taking one lot and dividing it into two lots. It was originally lot two, and they're dividing it into lot two A and two B.
Court, questions?
Do they have to have any approval? Those are less than half acre.
They're sewer.
They're sewer.
Public sewer. They're sewer in Leisure Land.
And, Mr. Strong, if you would, the relationship with Tarrant Regional, given their jurisdiction over those matters?
Yes, Court. The county doesn't enforce its own lot sizes. It does on behalf of the state, which would be TCUQ, and this instant, Tarrant Regional Water District has signed off on this replat, approving sanitary sewer lines, but not OSSF.
Within 1,000 feet of the water line of, or is it 2,000?
2,000, 2,000.
Tarrant Regional has the jurisdiction over sanitary systems, and that is what governs our lot sizes, is the sanitary sewer systems, not designated size of lots.
Correct.
It's what is able to be provided, to safely provide those services. And Tarrant Regional has signed off saying that they approve, so.
If they're good with it, there's no reason the county could disapprove of the sanitary sewer.
There's any further questions?
Further questions? Entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the Leisure Land final plat of lot two, of a replat of lot two. Block one creating lots two A and two B for filing purposes only.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and seconded by Commissioner Spivey to approve the final replat of lots in the Leisure Land subdivision, creating lots two A and two B in block one for filing purposes only. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Court. The next one is Brightwater subdivision. This is taking, excuse me, taking a parcel of land and creating a subdivision into, I believe, four lots. Yes, four lots, and I'm going to...
I stayed up here.
Pass to the county attorney's office.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is Brightwater. It's relatively a small subdivision. It's four lots. However, because there's road construction, it fell into a tier one instead of a tier two, so it was a more arduous endeavor for the developer. Justin McMillan is here today, and he has worked with the development office for some time to be compliant with our tier one subdivision rules. Kind of going through it, Mr. McMillan is seeking two variances. One is on the appendix E, the water rules that the county follows. The county follows that through the Texas Water Development Board Economic Distressed Area Program. We're part of the model subdivision rules, and so that's a grant program for certain counties that follow the model rules. This county does follow the model rules, and so we're open for those grants. However, from time to time, some of the individual water supply companies aren't in full compliance with those requirements, and so in those instances, the developer would need to seek a variance, and that's what Mr. McMillan's done on the water. There's also a second variance on the flare-out for the edge of roadway entrance/exit on the, I guess, the flare radius. The county on appendix M requires a 25-degree. This is a 10-degree radius, and I believe if I did the math right, it kind of depends on the surface area, but it's usually about a several feet difference in that flare-out, but it's still flared, so. but it's still flared, so. Mr. McMillan's seeking a variance for that. He's also obtained a performance, two-year performance bond for the roads and a follow-up maintenance bond. And he's not asking to waive the performance bond. There's no variance required, but he's asking if the court used their discretion, if they would waive the follow-up maintenance bond. And I'm not advocating for or against that on presenting. The argument here is that it's going to be, I believe, a gated community, and they may have an internal agreement for road maintenance, and so that would be discretionary if the court wants to keep the maintenance bond or not. But that's just for the maintenance. For the performance bond, that would still be in place. The sureties listed for the bonds are listed with the U.S. Treasury and well-funded, and so they meet the bonding requirements of a surety.
Court questions?
So on number one, the water. He has obtained the letter of will serve for the water, but because the water says that they have a, what was it? They couldn't guarantee a minimum of a 30-year water, so that's the only reason why he's seeking a variance, or seeking a variance on that.
That's correct. It's the capacity for the 30 years.
And then what is kind of been the precedent that we've done on the bonds for other subdivisions that's had to give one of these? Have we?
I think it's been both ways. So there's been maintenance bonds required for roads that were going to be open for the public, not necessarily county maintained, but at least open to the public, that could be later entered into a county maintenance program. And there have been maintenance bonds implemented for gated roads as well, so there is precedent to approve the maintenance bond and not give discretion there.
But the other bond would be just to make sure that the project's complete.
The performance bond?
Yes.
Yeah, that's to get the work done.
And it is a gated community?
I believe it's going to be a gated community.
Is that true? Okay.
If you would, please come forward and introduce yourself to the court.
This is Mr. Justin McMillan.
Good morning, Your Honor. Commissioners, Justin McMillan, developer and owner of Brightwater.
So I will tell you that having a couple of meetings or two or three meetings, Mr. McMillan has gone, and I think above and beyond getting everything in order and with his performance bonds, and he's got all the will serve letters and everything and done everything that he could possibly do to get this thing to court for the last probably year and a half that we've met, so. I don't have any, he just did say it was going to be a gated community.
That's correct.
Is this something that Carson property?
No. Well, no, it's past Forest Glen. It's right there at Mendering Way and.
At the top of the hill.
Yeah.
At the top of the hill.
Well, at the top of the hill, but you cross the water and then he'll be on the side of the water.
Yeah, at one time that was Carson property. That line down through there, and where I'm going at with this is the road construction. What kind of roads are you proposing, just for my identification?
Concrete paving.
Okay.
Yep. The engineering that you guys have speaks to it.
I would say probably this is going to be a mini Forest Glen subdivision.
It's going to match.
Pretty much.
I wish I could remember that developer's name. He's a good guy. He did three developments over there, Forest Glen and the one on the hill next to Michael's Cove, and I know was another one off on the way to Bushwhacker.
I don't know what that one is right now.
Looks like it's a good development.
Thank you.
Court?
You know, a lot of times those maintenance bonds are put in to protect the people that's buying the lots when they're, when your road's new, even though it's gated and stuff, you have, that's when you have most of your heavy equipment coming into your construction, with concrete trucks and like that. But if it's going to be a concrete road, you know, you have a lot less failure on a concrete road when it's new than you do a asphalt road, so, you know, I can see maybe waiving that on being a concrete road. I've got one in my precinct, which it was on our old subdivision rules that we've done, and they didn't do the bonding stuff because it was before we've done the other, the new rules coming back and stuff. But the maintenance bonds are usually put in until the PLS pay their dues or whatever, and they have maintenance money there to take care of the roads, is why we usually put them in there for new construction when it comes in, because that's usually the first two years is when the trucks and stuff are on board. But if it's going to be a concrete road, I'd be up for it, you know, so.
Commissioner? On what?
In our, in our motion, do we need to state the bonds or whatever?
No, we need to approve the application with, along with the variances.
Right.
The bonds, I believe, have to take individual action on. They are a part of the process unless you disagree, Mr. County Attorney.
It's part of those subdivision rules that the court would have to decide on that, so. I think you asked for the performance, and I want to ask to waive the maintenance.
Correct. And how long is this road, the distance, the length of it?
It's, it's, what?
Variance on the.
Yeah, 400 feet.
400 feet.
It's not far. Commissioner?
Well, if there's no other questions, I move that we approve the Brightwater subdivision with the variances of appendix V for the water and approve the variance of the appendix M with the width of the road for the radius and approve the maintenance, or I'm sorry, the performance bond and waiving the maintenance bond for filing purposes only.
I'll second the motion.
See if I've got this right. Did you say Z is in zebra or V is in victor?
We're here at the deal, it's victory today.
It's victory. Okay. All right then. Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the subdivision application for Brightwater along with variances for water, which is under the appendix V, the entrance radius, which is under appendix M, and approves the performance bond and waives the maintenance bond as presented. I think I got it all. Any further discussion?
One thing on that water deal, just to let everybody know that I don't think any of these water companies can guarantee 30 years of water right now, so, with what's going on in our, in our area right now, so we don't know what's going to happen on that. So that's something in our subdivision rules that we don't know if we can make them guarantee that it will be a 30, 30-year supply.
And to add to that, the 30-year requirement, as Ms. Strom stated, is part of the model subdivision, the Model Water Board.
Texas Water Development Board.
Thank you.
E dot MSR model subdivision rules.
And it is important that we have those in our rules because mainly for the municipalities, it provides a funding source for our municipalities, so, but you're exactly right, and it's that way across state in many regards.
With what's going on with, what the commissioner said with other issues that we're dealing with that could be an issue to reexamine.
Court, further questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Court.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Court.
All right, let's. Commissioner Richardson?
Yes, Court. This is one that we had a few weeks ago that we denied in court over they didn't have their structures on the plat because this was a section of land that's being divided. They'd already had structures on it, and there was some deed restrictions and stuff in there that required that each lot had to be a minimum of one acre, so they had to go in there and do some resur surveying and do some arranging on there, and it looks like they got everything intact and what needs to be done on their plat now.
Court questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the final replat of lot 169 of the Wagon Tree subdivision, section one, creating lots 169-R, 169-R1, and 169-R2 for filing purposes only.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner McCam to approve the replat of lot 169 in the Wagon Tree subdivision, section one, creating lots 169-R, 169-R1, and 169-R2 for filing purposes only. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Item 13 is open and consider bids. Ms. Torres?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have two sets of bid responses. First one is fiscal year 2025 onsite sewer inspections, and we received two responses, one from Jamie Dunklin and one from Danny Wilson.
Court questions? Discussion?
We have Danny Wilson, who has been our onsite sewer. And then we have Jamie Dunklin. Looks like there's four or five dollars difference between the two.
I think that's, the county only pays on complaints. The other fees and stuff that are on there are collected or paid for by the person that's putting the application in for the sewer, and we paid the complaint, complaint fee.
That is correct. The two services are from the installers, property owners, and then the complaint fee is what the county pays when we have them go out on a complaint.
And Danny, how long has Danny been our onsite sewer?
I think four years, yes. Four years, two. This would be his third time that we have gone for bid since Danny came on board.
Have we had, have we had any record of complaint?
I think there has been record of complaint. We've had a number filed in our office over time. We've had with others as well, you know. In this day and age, we do get a lot.
I have had some complaints on the service, on calls and stuff like that in the previous deal and stuff, so that's, that's the only projection that I've had on there, and I think we have had some other issues on some stuff, on floodplain and stuff like that with what we have right now, so.
I've had a few complaints as well, and there is an issue with one of the floodplains in my precinct that was permitted in a floodplain sewer and stuff.
So. We have two proposals, very close, public certification. Let me make sure I got this right. I want to say it correctly, for new service residential, $410. Existing service, $445 for complaint from Mr. Wilson. Mr. Dunklin's is $425 residential, $400 existing service, and $50 on complaint inspections. If you're non-residential, I'm sorry, for new service, his is $475 and $460, I believe, Mr. Wilson. So, that's the two we've got. If there's no further comments, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to bid invitation for the fiscal year 2025 sewer facility inspection services response form to select Jamie Dunklin services.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the onsite sewer facility inspection services contract for Jamie Dunklin, and that is a two-year.
Two-year.
For a two-year term. Any further discussion or comments? All those in favor? Post? Passes four-one. Next one?
We have fiscal year 2025 pest controls. We received three responses from Pest Master of Plano and McKinney, Gemini Pest Services, and Warren's Pest Solutions. I would like to note that for Seafamily or Pest Services of Plano.
I'm sorry.
For Pest Services of Plano and McKinney, they submitted two sheets. The first one is just pricing without termite treatment, and then they submitted a second sheet that included their termites. So those both should be included in your backup, but it might make the numbers look a little different.
Court questions? Comments? Discussion?
You know, they were, they, we got them here to do the precinct barns, this last go-around deal. I, we haven't been outside our barns. The previous deal we had, they always came out and sprayed and stuff, but this one here hasn't, came out. We haven't had anything on the bills, or they haven't come out and sprayed our precinct barns, but I see they do have them included in here in this contract.
And I believe they have not charged for those locations.
Yeah, they haven't charged for them. We haven't been getting any service on them, so I don't know if they were not in the class contract or not.
They were. It's just always been as a on-call. Because many times, as you know, with the precincts, we take care of a lot of things. They all take care of things yourselves, but it was there as an option to be used.
When we first started doing it, we were eating up the black widows and crickets, and they took care of them, and we did spray, so.
Backcountry didn't submit a proposal?
I think there was a problem with them being notified.
Okay.
Because they were, is this an annual contract, once a year?
Two years.
Two years, so we had them. Two years. So we had them, I guess, four years ago. Then we had a different company, this, this go around.
We've had backcountry for a while, haven't we?
Was it back? It wasn't back. We paying backcountry now?
The company that's been doing it, we've had for 11 years.
Yeah.
Um, unfortunately, who has sent the bid packet twice and it was spam email and I think we should have been...
I see this, this top bidder, top sheet here, they got, looks like the best prices and, and they, it does say without termite treatment, when I'm sure the other ones are too, because I think that's a special treatment that you had to have done.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't, I'm not sure if theirs are included with termite or not.
Now, I see them one where they say, uh, wood destroying insects will be priced out on a case-by-case basis.
Case-by-case.
Which that isn't uncommon at all.
Yeah.
We had that at the courthouse 20 years ago with our, we had to put traps out separate. So... Court?
Looks like the seed family's got the best bid.
Court, if there's no further discussion, I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the fiscal year 2025 pest control service bid response, uh, to Seed Family Premier Services LLC.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner McCam to award the 2025 pest control services to the Seed Family Premier Services LLC as presented. Any further discussions? All those in favor? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Ms. Torres? Item 14, consider and take action to adjourn.
So I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and second by Commissioner McCam to adjourn at 9:55. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously. Thank you for being with us.